Good morning. Welcome to the March 2018 Board of Trustees Meeting. Thank you for being here. I'd like to convene the meeting with the roll call, please, Bill.
Mr. Duckett.
Here.
Mr. Brown. Dr. Caudle. Mrs. Grumbles. Mrs. Hopkins. Mr. McCullen. Mr. McMahon. Mr. Knapp. Mr. Stevens. Mr. Stone. And Ms. Atkins. We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. As Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees, it's my responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any Board Member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any of the matters coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Having none, I'll move forward with the approval of consent agenda. Having already read the materials listed under the consent agenda, is there any item that needs to be moved to the discussion portion of either the open or the closed session agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve all the items listed below. The minutes of the January 2018 meeting, the ratification of mail ballots dated February 27th, and I'll look for a second of the motion, please. All in favor? Again, thanks for being here for this meeting. Chair Cochran cannot be with us today, but he sends his thanks to the trustees for their commitment to the university and to everyone who contributed, contributes to the presentations this morning and reports in this week's meetings. Yesterday, we had our committee meetings. We heard important updates in the meetings regarding both opportunities and challenges that lie ahead for our great university. Those updates included an encouraging progress report from Professor Jim LaLuce about the work of the Chancellor's History Task Force. We also received an update from Vice Chancellor Crisp about the formation of the Mental Health Task Force that will help us assess how to best meet the health and the wellness needs of our students in the future. I will serve on that task force committee and look forward to working with the group. I'll have more to say about both of those items in the report out of the University Affairs Committee later this morning. Today, our featured presentations for this morning's full board session will cover the campus master plan and the important connections that it will have to the blueprint for next and the Carolina Center for Public Service. Last week, Chancellor Folt, Trustee McCullen, and I attended the Board of Governors meeting at UNC Wilmington. We appreciate the ongoing support of the Board of Governors' leadership and the Finance Committee. Their support for the UNC Chapel Hill, for UNC Chapel Hill and for other schools in the system are vital to this state. One important highlight from the meeting was a thorough discussion of and a positive vote on proposed fees and tuition levels for the campuses. The affirmative vote included an approval of a new set of student fees structure for the Kenan Flagler Business School that Dean Doug Shackelford has identified as critical for the future expansion and continued success for our undergraduate business school programs. Importantly, I'd like to thank also Jonathan Pruitt, our new CFO, for his help in this process. We have so much to be proud of at Carolina for what happens every day in the classrooms and our research labs and our impact on the communities, including all 100 counties of our great state of North Carolina. Last week, multiple graduate and professional schools and programs received excellent national recognition in U.S. News &amp; World Report's most recent rankings. Here are a few of the highlights. The School of Medicine rose to number one in primary care and tied for 22nd in research overall. As the son of a family physician, I think that's amazing. I think it's brilliant that it's here at North Carolina. The specialty area of obstetrics and gynecology placed 14th. Congratulations to all of you and your leadership team, faculty and staff, on this recognition of the School of Medicine and what it means for UNC health care. Several science programs in the College of Arts and Sciences also ranked highly. They included the Chemistry Department, which tied for 15th of specialties in analytical and inorganic chemistry, coming in at 2nd and 10th respectively nationally. Statistics Department, which ranked 19th, and Computer Science, which tied for 25th. I would like to recognize Dean Kevin Guskiewicz. I don't know if he's here this morning. There you are. Thank you. Those are some great accomplishments. The School of Social Work tied for 5th overall in the national rankings. The Biostatistics Program in the Gilling School of Public Health tied for 8th. The School of Nursing tied for 14th overall for its master's degree program and 13th for the Doctor of Nursing program. The Kenan Flagler Business School ranked 19th overall and made the top 20 in specialty areas, including accounting, executive MBA, management, and marketing. These rankings are just more indications of the innovative teaching, learning, and research that we have here at Carolina, and it ranks us among the very best in America. We congratulate all of the deans, the faculty members, and the students who play a role in this success. We appreciate the leadership of Chancellor Carol Folt, Provost Bob Bluen, and our administration for the work they've done to provide to make this kind of success possible. On behalf of Chair Cochran, I also want to say how pleased that we are at the current overall positive trajectory of our world-class university. As we've seen through our meetings this week, a great many of the critical indicators, including admissions, academic excellence, and fundraising, just to name a few, are trending strongly in the right direction. These specific areas of success are measured against the backdrop of our blueprint for next, the strategic framework Chancellor Folt brought us last year. Implementing this framework is critical for our university's future and for the campaign for Carolina launched this year. Thanks to the work and the leadership of Chancellor Folt, Vice Chancellor David Ruth, and our excellent campaign leadership team, we are well on the way of accomplishing our goals. You'll hear other significant updates from the Chancellor and her report, but it's important for our Board to celebrate progress at the same time we continue to address current and future challenges to this university. We reached a time during the spring semester that we must say heartfelt farewell to our student body president, who serves as ex officio member. Over the past year, Trustee Elizabeth Atkins has taken her responsibilities very seriously and worked very hard to share the students' perspectives with us. She cares deeply about her classmates and has been highly effective advocate on their behalf. Elizabeth is a wonderful example of how true leaders speak effectively for others. To recognize Elizabeth's contributions, I will now call on Secretary Keyes to read a resolution of appreciation.
Whereas Elizabeth Atkins served as President of the university's student body during the 2017-2018 academic year and spoke passionately on behalf of her fellow students as a valued member of the university's Board of Trustees, and whereas Ms. Atkins' administration admirably focused on increased awareness of sexual assault, mental health, and diversity and inclusion, and whereas Ms. Atkins worked hard to educate her fellow students and campus community by focusing much-needed attention on red zone awareness, which is the time period sexual assaults are most likely to occur on campus, and planned advocacy events and promoted resources to combat this issue. And whereas Ms. Atkins spearheaded efforts to register more students to vote and encourage more student participation in the arena of civic engagement, and whereas these experiences enabled Ms. Atkins to make a significant contribution to the campus community through her establishment of and service on various task forces, including the affordability task force, and whereas Ms. Atkins tirelessly advocated for those and other issues of vital importance to her fellow students, campus, and UNC family, taking special consideration to support and collaborate with graduate and professional students, and whereas Ms. Atkins during her service as a trustee provided valuable counsel and input to the Board and also, and always did so while displaying grace, compassion, and wit, and from her first meeting made it readily apparent why her fellow students elected her as President of the student body. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill thanks and congratulates Elizabeth Atkins for her outstanding service as student body president and as a trustee and wishes her all the best as they soon-to-be Tar Heel alumna. Elizabeth.
We're also glad to have Savannah Putnam, the incoming student body president here this morning.
Chairman, I'd move approval of that resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't miss that. So I have a motion for approval, and I need a second. All in favor? Thank you. Now I'll move on to Savannah. Thank you, Richard. Savannah, would you please stand so we can recognize you? We look forward to working with you. You've got big shoes to fill, but we know you'll put forth every effort, and we look forward to it. Thank you. Now I'll call on Trustee Atkins for her board report.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that wonderful resolution that was so kind. Bill, I know that pained you having to read that. You're almost done with me. So today for my final board remarks, I do want to recognize two student leaders that I have with me today, and if they could stand when I say their name. Colin Miller, who is an undergraduate senator, and Rachel Augustine, who is the Finance Chair of the Undergraduate Senate. I want to start by saying congratulations to Savannah and Manny on their recent election, and our inauguration is April 3rd, when they will officially take office, and Madeline and I are officially out. And today, I just wanted to do a few year-in-review highlights from both the undergrad side and the graduate side to just touch on the many accomplishments that both administrations have had. So on the undergraduate side, we implemented our red zone programming. It was our first year doing it, and it was a huge success. We engaged students civically through Get Out the Vote efforts, which received the second highest student voter turnout in history, and on campus through fostering dialogue between student groups. We just hosted something last night called the Great Debate, which brought many different student groups together to talk about campus issues. We increased diversity efforts across campus through programming efforts and policy change. The Student Advisory Committee to the Chancellor initiated the process of hiring a Spanish-speaking counselor in the Office of Scholarship and Financial Aid. We promoted environmental sustainability through celebrating Three Zeros Day events and our Earth Day events, which are coming up. We also worked with IAC and PanHeld to ensure that all Greek organizations have a green chair on their executive board. On the academic side, we've worked with administration to form a new absence policy, new gen ed curriculum, and passed a textbook affordability pledge with over 150 professors currently signed on. We also implemented an outfit reform survey, which received over 1,000 responses that we will then take and send to administration about how students feel about the outfit curriculum. We have a Stomp the Stigma of Mental Health event that is coming up on April 24th, also put on by the Student Advisory Committee to the Chancellor. We've partnered with nine other student organizations, all-day programming and ending with the keynote speaker in the evening. And I could go on and on, but this is just a small summary of the great work that our administration did this year. And on the graduate side, GPSF Student Appreciation Week is April 2nd through the 6th, which is next week, with a whole bunch of events intended to celebrate graduate and professional students at Carolina, and Madeline has made it fully clear that she does expect gifts. So I hope everyone, I hope everyone has that written down. This year, the GPSF has completed the reorganization of student government at UNC and reworked the GPSF to make the organization more responsive and inclusive than ever before. They are also working towards receiving a graduate student seat on the Association of Student Governments to ensure that the graduate students in the university system are represented at that level. Two of our GPSFers led working groups and federal advocacy, and they once again demonstrated UNC's commitment to lead. They have also produced the Graduate Student Bill of Rights to ensure that graduate students and professors and faculty know what the graduate student rights are. And with the undergraduates, they laid the groundwork for a new collaborative cooperative system of student self-governance at UNC. And just before I end, I just want to say thank you all for making this an incredible year. To my fellow trustees, thank you for your guidance and for your patience this year. I know that you genuinely value what I have to say, and I appreciate that so much. But also to everyone, the leadership team and everyone in this room, thank you for working with me and for working with student government so that we could enact tangible change on campus because we couldn't do it without you. It has definitely been the most challenging but rewarding year of my life. This has been a dream job, and I wouldn't trade it for the world. And if I could say one last thing, it would be to please remember to always put the students first. They are the reason we are all here, and they are the reason Carolina is great. They are smart, passionate, and driven individuals, and it has truly been the honor of my life to serve them this year. Thank you. Those are my remarks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Would you do me one favor? I'm told, I think I see your parents. Would you mind introducing your parents and thank them for sharing?
Of course. Wow, I'm awful. These are my parents, Rodney and Julia Atkins, and thank you all so much for being here. I really appreciate it, and of course, wouldn't have survived this year without them.
Well, we'll now move to the Chancellor's remarks.
Thank you. Wait, never want to follow the student body president's goodbye remarks. But it's not goodbye. We know that. It's just been wonderful, and I'm very much looking forward to continuing to work with Elizabeth. And I want to just also extend some comments that we made last night, but it has been truly fantastic working with you, such a strong work ethic, and we know how hard she works, but she manages to look calm and bring forward really challenging things in that, in a way that can be really productive, and I think that is marvelous, and I think you do that so well. It's been just such a pleasure working with you. It's also, I want to also mention Madeline Percy. I know we recognized her yesterday, but Madeline, of course, who's been leading the GPSF, this has been a unique year. There's only one year when you have the first year, when two organizations have restructured and are trying to melt, and how it starts is a big predictor of what's going to happen going forward. So not only did you have all the issues that the student body president has and you're doing in graduate students, you also had the real job of trying to get this off to a new start that would really be productive. And I just want to say thank you again because I think your wonderful partnership was a real beacon for everyone. You know, when we work in partnership, it makes everybody inspired, and it wasn't just the two of you. You have amazing teams. So I just want to thank you all for your collective amazing work this year and say how much we appreciate it. And next year, with our new wonderful Savannah and Manny coming in, you're going to be the recipients of that wonderful start, so I think you'll be able to take us to new heights. So thank you again. Really appreciate that. It's always a busy time. We've all been welcoming Jonathan Pruitt, but when they said, you know, you might want to welcome Jonathan Pruitt, I said, what? He's been in this job for years because he's already been such an important part of our team, and of course, he was important to us when he was working at the system. So again, I too say, Jonathan, I can't believe we're still counting, really, months that you've been here, but it's wonderful having you here and to be on the team. I also wanted to mention that recent, our trustee emeritus Sally Schupping Russell was just recognized for the Lifetime Achievement Award for Women in Business by the Triangle Business Journal, and I thought that was wonderful. She's not here today, but she's with us all the time. Yesterday, in the University Affairs, you did have that wonderful report from the History Task Force, and we are really so lucky to have such fantastic people working on it. One of them, of course, is Cecilia Moore, and I just want to ask Cecilia to stand because today I'm going to embarrass her. Please, we want to thank Cecilia, but all of you may not know, she just published a book, which I got one of the copies, and I'm very glad, and that's a big deal to publish a book. It's out. It's the Federal Theater Project in the American South, talking all about that amazing history. And so we really wanted to say, just say thank you and congratulations on your new book. It highlights really the birth of the Carolina Playmakers during the New Deal era, so everyone's going to benefit from that too, Cecilia. Thank you. When you get into this time of year, we're all starting a mad rush towards commencement, which means that about five or six times a day, we're at a celebratory event. You know, you cannot help but be amazed by the creativity and the energy that happens here, and we're all looking forward to that. There've been already many thank yous and congratulations, and there'll be more of those events. I know members of the Board will be attending a lot of them. The graduates will have a chance to hear Ryv Arcott's journey since leaving UNC in 2001. You all know his story of founding Carolina for Cabera, that's in the most impoverished neighborhood of Nairobi, Kenya, and a number of people have even been there, but he's going to give a wonderful talk. I think we're going to be very excited to have that, and so I won't try to say everything that he's going to say, but I know that you'll all be excited to see him here. He was named Time and Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation Hero of Global Health, so very appropriate for our university to have one of our wonderful alums speaking at graduation. We have another preview I wanted to mention is that we have our second Annual Arts Everywhere Day coming up next Friday. I think the first one was so successful, we were almost afraid to try a second because how do you top that? But as it turned out, people were just so energized that even more student groups, even more displays, and different activities will be taking place, and I think it's going to be so much fun. So I hope people will be out there and have a chance to really enjoy things. The preview, we might have some more music across campus like we did last year, so I think it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun. We also had the ribbon cutting for Current, which is the new art space and studio space right down there between Franklin and campus. What was really great, I bumped into a faculty member recently who said, as they were running into campus, they happened to go by and didn't know that much about Current, but they said, I went by this beautiful place, and as I looked in the windows, there were people dancing and music playing, and I thought that is exactly what people dreamed about, is that not only would we have the arts there, but they could walk by and just see it happening. So that's been very exciting. It's 7,000 square feet in the Carolina Square, and it really is already doing a great job connecting the community and the campus. There is, as you heard, 20th Annual Graduate Student Recognition Celebration, which is part of that Week of Appreciation on April 5th, and at that time, 22 graduate students are going to receive Impact Awards and Horizon Awards for their research. And I always like to remind people that our amazing research portfolio is really, the graduate students are the engine of that amazing research portfolio, so it's wonderful to see them recognized for their work, and it's going to cover a range of projects that I think people will enjoy. I've had a chance in the last couple of weeks to do a lot of outreach into the community in different kinds of groups. On Monday, I was able to speak to the, an industry CEO roundtable that we pulled together, where we'd invited, you know, about 30 CEOs from major companies in North Carolina, they're global companies, and we were talking with them. Bob was there, and Judith, and a number of the senior leaders, but we were really talking to them about how can we deepen our partnership as a research, educational university of such importance to the state and work directly with the businesses that are here, represented here, and want to grow here. And we said, we've got a $1 billion research enterprise and close to 30,000 students. Are we doing all we can with business and industry to really see those partnerships flourish? So that was very exciting. They are very interested in deepening those connections, and I think we've seen that. I was also able to go talk to the Durham Rotary Club, and you know, we go around to all these different groups, but there's a lot of interest. So I think in part, being able to have that strategic framework, the strategic plan, and the campaign launched, it's allowing us to deepen the relationships with the industry and the community that are a fundamental part of that plan. So I think next year, we'll be going through a lot of examples of that with the Board. We also last weekend had the Dance Marathon, and I just want to mention it because we're in our 20th year, and it would be easy to take that for granted, but that is a phenomenal event. They raised over $430 million, and that, I mean, yeah, $430,000, I said that before too. They're really amazing. I'm the biggest fan of the students. I think anything can happen, but $430,000 is really pretty good, too. I don't exaggerate. But that's an incredible number, so I just think I want to mention that. And you know, you get probably 1,400 students signed up to do it. They really are out there dancing and doing this for 24 hours and raising that. They are up to close to $6 million for the children's health, and it's the largest student organization like that in the state, so they do that. But what's amazing is you have this 24 hours, but that takes a whole year to get it ready. And so these are, again, are students that are doing all the other things they do and putting their efforts into that. We want to thank, also wanted to mention Blue Cross Blue Shield just gave us another $1.2 million for the School of Medicine's Physicians Assistance Program, and that too is a program that we announced here just a couple of years ago. So a lot of these activities are really going forward. You know, the university is very strong on its service mind. We were just ranked fourth for the number of Peace Corps volunteers, which is up three spots from last year, so this idea of service that you hear in so many areas really is part of the culture, and I think that's something that is reinforced in the research as well. I remember we celebrated a couple of years ago, the largest grant from the USAID, that was a $179 million grant to work on global health, to the Measure Evaluation in the Carolina Pop Center, who have both been here and given recent updates, and they just unsolicitedly were given an additional $52 million because that work is so important, and they're doing such a strong job to increase their efforts across the world. So we're seeing this service, research, as part of what we do in all areas. Now, we just, the students are back from spring break, and even during spring break, you're going to hear later today from the Carolina Center for Public Service, one of the main projects is they go off and they do service projects over break. And I had asked students to let me know where they were during break on my Twitter feed, and I got some great examples, but a lot of it had to do without doing service projects when they were also maybe service projects in beautiful places across the world, so that's fantastic. During spring break also, in Australia, Eliza Harrison, Lucy Best, Emily Kahn won the Halt Prize, and that's the world's largest student competition for social good. So again, it's another, it's just, they were one of 15 finalists. Apparently 100,000 students from 120 countries competed for that award. They did a fabulous job. So I think it's something that we're all proud of, but it's nice to be able to recognize some of the individuals that are involved. The last one I'm going to talk about is closer to home from the UNC Physical Therapy, Nursing, and Public Health. Students from there went to Tyrell County, which is one of our state's most underserved and sparsely populated areas, and they too spent a great deal of time doing service, and they did a week of health-related service projects in that county. So again, that's another example of people out really trying to help others across the state and the world. We've got the Three Zeros, we've got Earth Day, that's always something that we're very excited about. This year, we received the Gold Rating from the Association for the Advancement of Sustainability, and that's only the second time that we've received it, and only three universities have it. So again, that's an effort that we've talked about here that's very important. And by another metric, of course, there are many of these, from in Asia, we received the 13th international ranking in sustainability and the third in North America, so the efforts of our students and our staff are being recognized across the world. Now, we have many issues going forward with the blueprint for next, and I'm not going to go into that in great detail. I think Julia's committee is doing a wonderful job trying to really help us as we look to implementation, but that is one of the main jobs that the provost has taken on, and say, okay, we've got all this great work, we've got all these great dreams, now let's figure out how we're going to implement them. So one of the areas that we really are looking for implementation is in the various independent or the key signature initiatives. We've also been really looking at our metrics in some of our other initiatives, such as our innovation and entrepreneurship. our innovation and entrepreneurship. And we've seen a lot of growth there. I know you've heard of that a bit from Judith and her team. But just, for example, as of January 2018, we've seen a 25% increase in the numbers of ventures that have been launched. So we've gone from 521 to 418 just in the last year. And 77% of the ventures are still active in the state. So it really is doing that exponential rise that, that the people that started that committee and began it have really been pushing to see. 84% of the ventures are headquartered in 21 North Carolina counties. So it stretches across the state. It isn't just in the local area. They move out. 94% of the, more than $10 billion of annual revenue from those ventures are headquartered in the state. So this is really having a profound impact here. They employ about 70,000 people throughout these ventures worldwide, and close to 9,000 of them are employed right here in the state. So these are just examples, and we'll be reporting on more of those as we go forward. And finally, Bob and I are going to be meeting with various faculties, again, going back to each of the schools as we did when I first started, and talking to them about how they want to realize their own strategic plan during the campaign and as we move forward. We're very excited. We're starting with the School of Law next week. We both attended an amazing lecture there, and we're very much looking forward to it. They have a number of exciting new ventures that we'll be bringing forward to the board in the coming months that I think you're going to be very excited about. So I just want to close by thanking all of you. You've been a part of all these initiatives all year. But we also are doing these kickoff's for the campaign. We had our wonderful gala here. We were in Palm Beach. We have other ones planned. We're going to be in Washington DC in April, and we're going to be in Atlanta also in May. And then we'll be out in San Francisco launching in the fall. So we thank you for all the efforts that you've done to help us really get that launched. So now I have the special honor of introducing our two presentations that I think really do highlight all that we've been talking about taking place here. And we're going to do two things today. One, we're going to give you a look at the campus master plan. And I think what's exciting about this is not only the beauty and the excitement of the plan itself, but its tight link to the strategic plan. And I do want to thank the board, because that was one of the things the board said over and over, that they really wanted to see a master plan that would bring the strategic plan to life. And I think that's what you're going to see. And then you're going to hear more about the Carolina Center for Public Service. So I'll start by introducing Anna Wu, who really doesn't need an introduction, but she's the Vice Chancellor, the Associate Vice Chancellor of Facilities Research. She's been in that role since 2015. But you may not know that she's also a Massey Distinguished Service Award winner. And in 2009, she was elected to the College of the Fellows of the American Institute of Architects. She got her Master's of Architecture from Harvard and a BA from Penn, and she is going to be giving us that presentation today. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Chancellor. Well, this is a little bit of a tease, then, because we are going to talk today, we're going to focus today on the process that we've been engaged in this last year to knit the planning, physical planning process with the strategic framework. In May, we'll actually be bringing forward the presentation of the master plan to you. So it's been, the challenge that we received from the chancellor and the board has really enriched this process. The past year, the facilities planning and real estate team, together with our consultants, Air Saint Gross, and advised by Ben Edwards from the Art and Science Group, have spent the last year, or the last year, going around campus and engaging with the strategic liaison work groups, and really understanding what their needs were and what the physical manifestations of those needs might be in the master plan. So the master plan is really not just, we wanted to enrich that physical framework and show and demonstrate how we can realize some of the exciting initiatives that are being put forward in the strategic framework. So what we'll bring forward to you in May is not just a wholesale building program, but identify selective target opportunities to renovate and add facilities and spaces to realize these initiatives. We've been guided by a trustee administration steering committee and a campus-wide strategic liaison group through this process. So let's just show you what we've done in the last year. We began by conducting listening sessions with each strategic initiative group, and you see them listed on this, on this slide. Our goal was to understand what they anticipated would be the physical needs of their initiatives. Then we moved to physical planning workshops with these groups, with a group that was made up of individuals from each one of these initiatives. Together, we had a chance to identify the intersections of their objectives and explore how programmatic synergies, new transportation resources, and physical assets could be leveraged for innovative and effective uses. These were two-way conversations, so we had the opportunity for these representatives to trade information back and forward with the ongoing work that their initiative groups were engaged in. The two pillars for the blueprint of the Blueprint for NEXT drive each of these strategic initiatives, which in turn will drive the master plan. And this opportunity has really been a first for us, that we've been able to dovetail the visionary aspect of the strategic framework in a master plan that forecasts the future vision of the campus while also targeting operational improvements. So just for, as an example, we've worked with Extend Carolina, Modernizing Student Support, and the Learning Imperative, all initiatives under the new graduate, to understand how changes to the student body composition, for example, and the nature of residential, the nature of the residential experience will affect campus and university space. It could be something as, as fundamental as housing and dining. What are our offerings in each of those fields to address our undergraduates, our graduates, even the non-traditional student and what their engagement with the campus might be? How does student, how do student support spaces, anticipated by the modernizing student support effort, how can these success hubs be realized on campus? Should they be concentrated? Should they be dispersed? What do we, how do we approach bringing these interdisciplinary services to our campus, and where do we begin to realize these? How can active learning be incorporated into our existing learning environments? Where do we see new teaching labs? How do we expand our, our offerings of active learning classrooms? What's the role of the professional schools in their teaching environments as they intersect with the undergraduates? And then outside the classrooms, where in residence halls and library and study, where are the collaboration spaces that will be developed across campus? What you see in this plan is really a highlight of the uses that, as they exist on campus. So where are the, where are the arts? Where are all these areas currently concentrated? You see, we tend to have neighborhoods, and what we are looking at is how we can bring the intellectual, how we can bring the energy out of these neighborhoods, bring them together into, into identified areas so that people can do more collaboration, and they can move beyond their departmental assigned space into common campus space where everybody can be enriched by that collaboration. So what you see or outlined are possible areas where we anticipate some of that collaboration can occur. Moving to the Great Convergence, we know there are three major initiatives there where we will, we do anticipate new investments in applied physical biomedical and computational sciences, as well as opportunities to increase our translational and commercialization activity. We also, I know you've heard about the creativity hubs. Where could we identify areas for this prioritized research to occur on campus? And then Arts Everywhere. Arts Everywhere is intentionally broad. It can, it should occur on campus in our, in our open spaces. It should occur inside our buildings. But where are opportunities that we have, we've worked particularly closely with Emile and his team, to identify how we can really enrich every program moving forward with their, with their thoughts and ideas? So where can we leverage these existing assets? And where are, where should we make any major new investments to create these dynamic mixed-use opportunities? We also have been looking for where we can pilot any of these initiatives in minor building elevate, in minor building renovations, so we can get some quick wins. Let's, let's experiment. Let's see how these things evolve. Let's, let's, let's start to look for opportunities and not just wait for the big moves, but, but to look for every move that we can make on campus and see how we can begin to look at our, our projects and our project development with this lens. So what we've, what we've talked about with all of these groups, with the strategic liaison groups, is that the success of the plan ultimately relies on us, the campus, to infuse each project with the strategic themes that underlie the plan. And with the rollout of the plan in May, will broaden our engagement with the campus groups to ensure that all of these themes are integrated into all of our campus projects. The goal together is to weave these broader objectives for the life of the campus into the immediate purposes of all of our projects. And with that preview, we will see you in May. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Having been a part of the process now for, I don't know, a couple of years, maybe? Something like that. It's been a pleasure for several of the trustees to serve on this committee, but also to see the diversity of thought across campus and the input. I'm amazed, really, in doing our planning for the next 20 or 25 years, as I congratulate you and your staff on what we've accomplished so far.
Thank you very much. We'll see you at your next meeting.
Anna, one second. I think the chancellor wanted to ask you something.
Sure.
Well, I, too, I wanted to say something similar to what Dwight said, but what I was so excited about, and I thought maybe you'd talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
Is that in a more traditional campus conversations, I think you would go and you'd talk to the people that had a building here, here, and here. You might do it geographically, or you might say, "I'll talk to students, I'll talk to faculty, I'll talk to staff." And I think you did that, but the way that you chose to bring people together around the working groups was, was something very different. So can you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
Because that seems to have led to this cross-birchization in a way that's pretty exciting, and I haven't seen that before.
Yeah, thank you. I, I can, I'm happy to elaborate on that. I think you're absolutely right. And in the, in the 2006 plan, as an example, we would take, we've taken a fairly traditional approach of, of looking at land use, looking at the technical aspects of how you develop a campus, understanding what the capacity is, the environmental resources, all those sorts of, all those sorts of layers. And we have done that. That is the foundation of this plan. Where we've never really had the opportunity before is actually go out and engage so intensely with the academic and student affairs groups who want to realize different types of programs on campus. So it's not just meeting with the natural science departments and understanding what their lab needs are. It's not just meeting with student affairs and understanding what their housing needs are. It's really those liaison groups, those strategic work, work groups are a cross-disciplinary group, group of people who are trying to tackle complex projects and issues together. And to get that kind of understanding about where the university is going, and how then we can reinforce that in the areas that we choose to develop. Because we know that the pace of development is going to be slower than it was in the last decade. I mean, that's just, the rate of, of physical change is not that significant. So, is not as significant. So where we make our efforts, we need to, we need to realize as much, we need to advance as many of these initiatives as possible. So you see now, in the, in the programming for the, for the science complex and the Institute for Convergent Science, all sorts of groups coming to the table. Arts Everywhere is there, in addition to the academic departments. Judith's people are there, the real estate people are there. I mean, it's, it's how can we bring all the energy of the campus to understand what our issues are, and we follow those, those, those drivers? So it has been particularly, I think, for our staff, a great opportunity to get the current pulse of the campus, to break any assumptions we have about the way that we've done things, and to think about what those new opportunities might be. How can our residential life be diverse and mixed-use? It's not just where students, you know, go to sleep, and it's not just where they study. But, but already in that Carmichael Makers space, you see some piloting of these initiatives, where we can start to integrate the, the rich offerings of the campus in every aspect of, of, of the building's life, the program's life. So I hope that's a little bit, I flushed out a little bit more. It has been, and I've seen a lot of planning processes here on campus, it has been a unique opportunity, one that's really energized us, and we're really looking forward to the opportunities we have ahead. So thank you.
Anna, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I, I just, I want to applaud it as well, like Dwight. I think it does, you can see the matching to the strategic plan in so many ways. Because it, it seems to me, we're really not talking about expanding for the sake of population, but much more creating the hubs and the cohesiveness that matches up. One thing I would think, as you go forward, it'd be interesting, when you're talking about reaching out to the broader community. I think there could be a temptation where the plan can be so focused on us, the Carolina community as a campus, and not be as mindful of what it means to ensure that those who come onto our campus from the outside are welcomed in ways that are basic, on into the more costly, basic, from wayfinding and being able to get around the campus so that there's a, a feeling of inclusiveness to those who aren't daily on the campus.
Right.
And it sounds like, I just want to ask, that seems to me kind of the next step a little bit.
That is. And we will, when we come back in May, start to illustrate ideas that we have to address these major themes. We've pulled them together into three very broad themes. I don't want to, I don't want to leak the secrets yet. Or you won't be, you won't invite us back in May. But I think we've, we've come up with some really fundamental ways to express it, which I think people can grasp and understand. Again, it's an entry point into a plan that we're going to realize. So that's, that's always the goal of a, of a, of a physical framework, is to, is to have people, it takes more than a group of 20 to implement it. So people need to bring these lenses to, to their efforts as they think about programming buildings, designing buildings, and even more importantly, how they operate their programs and how they, how they move forward to enliven their, their spaces 10, 20, you know, 30 years forward. So it's not intended to be static. It, it should be flexible to respond to what the university needs in the next five years and 15 years forward. So that's been our goal. We've appreciated, again, the challenge that the chancellor and the trustees gave us to make this a non-traditional, from a physical planning process. And, and I think we've all, we'll all bring you, I think, an exciting plan as a result of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna.
Today's second presentation will be from the Carolina Center for Public Service, and I'd like to invite Provost Bob Bluen forward to introduce the presentation.
Chancellor, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Lynn Blanchard. Lynn is a Clinical Associate Professor in the Department of Health Behavior and Director of the Carolina Center for Public Service here at UNC. She oversees the Apple Service Learning, Buckley Public Service Scholars, and Faculty Engaged Scholars programs. Her research focuses on public service, including community partnerships and collaboration techniques. Her work also includes a wide array of community programs, ranging from early interventions for children with special needs to HIV/AIDS presentations and has, Lynn is a double-tar heel with a Master's of Public Health and doctorate degrees from the Gilling's School. In 2016, she was in In 2016, she was inducted into the National Academy of Community Engagement Scholars. Please welcome Lynn Blanchard to the podium.
I appreciate that, and even better than me, you're going to hear from a couple of students. So I'll try and get through my part pretty quickly. First of all, it's really an honor to be here, to share some of the great work that we're doing, not only at the center, but I think really representing the campus. And I think you're going to find it really expands on and builds on Chancellor Folt's remarks about service, as well as Elizabeth's. So there are going to be some connections, which is kind of what the Center for Public Service is all about. Before I start, because I don't want to neglect to give a shout-out to the fact that none of this would be possible without a really incredible, small, we say small but efficient staff, but some incredible folks at the center who make all this possible through their dedication. So this is our mission, and the short version that I always often use for our mission is that our mission is to connect the energy and expertise of this university to the needs of the community. And somewhat uniquely, it is not just about students, though certainly many, many of our programs, but we also support faculty and staff through various programs and the campus as a whole. And importantly, it's not, I sometimes say it's not your mother's public service, it goes beyond volunteerism, and what on some campuses is really thought of as community service, which is great, we encompass that, but our work is really inextricably connected to all parts of this university's mission, and that's what I hope this presentation will demonstrate. I think throughout it, you'll also see how aligned this work is with the blueprint for next, as we work, I think we're already aligned, and now that we have that, we work more all the time to make sure that we're supporting that as well. So first of all, you know, let's see, here we go. So at Carolina, public service is engaged teaching and learning. As was mentioned, we have our Apples Service Learning Program. Now, this is an innovative and unique student-led model. It started almost 30 years ago. Our students, with some faculty, got together and said, "We want our academic learning to have meaning and be applied, and how can we do that and connect it to service?" So over the years, it's grown a great deal, but the core value is really connecting academics and applied service-related experiences. And this remains one of the very few student-led, staff-supported service-learning programs in the nation. As students often point out, the hyphen is critical. It's that connection that connects your service to your learning. In many of the Apples programs, you get academic credit, we have courses that we support, and I'll tell you a little bit more about internships, alternative break experiences were mentioned, you'll hear about those from one of our students, and fellowships. So let me tell you a little bit about the courses last year. There were 81 courses in 35 different departments, taught by 66 different faculty members. 1,723 students took those courses. And at graduation, 33% of the class of 2017 graduated with at least one service-learning credit that actually fulfilled their experiential education requirement. All started by students, folks, 30 years ago. At Carolina, public service is also engaged research. Chancellor Folt talked a little bit about how much of the research does serve the public, but I'm going to tell you about both a program we have and some general research on campus that's even more closely connected to community. Our THORT Faculty Engaged Scholars program began in 2007, and we competitively select eight to 10 faculty every two years to join this program and strengthen their research over a curriculum that's offered over two years. To date, we've had 53 faculty members from 10 schools in the college, representing more than 20 departments. Now importantly, in 2015, we said, "Well, you know, we're investing a little bit of money, we give them a stipend of $5,000 a year. What does this mean going forward after they get out of the program? What have they learned?" So I asked them to let me know about any research they felt they had gotten, that they could attribute some of what they had learned in this program. And I heard from faculty, and it added up to more than $12 million in grants to departments and schools across campus. These are two of our current THORT Faculty Engaged Scholars. Anna Agby-Davis is on the left, up high, she's in anthropology, archaeology specifically, and works with preservation and heritage groups, particularly Stagville and the Pauli-Murray House. Corretta Genaret from the School of Nursing is on the right. She works with web-based training to help those with sickle cell better communicate with their healthcare providers, and those are just two. In terms of broader research on campus, there are 82 campus units that have formal partnerships through research, through some of their research projects, and 270 different projects that have at least some community-engaged component. 95 of those are 100% community-engaged projects, totally in partnership with the community, and they total more than $15 million, well, actually about $16 million in grants. At Carolina, public service is also engaged service, and we like to use the term engaged because this means it's not something we do to people, or even for people, but rather with people and communities. Our Buckley Public Service Scholars program offers a framework for students committed to public service to enhance and expand their experiences and learning. Last year, there were 1,567 active participants. They came from 72 North Carolina counties, 39 states in DC, and 17 countries. They represented 60 majors across campus. They worked on 10,000 projects, more than 10,000 projects, and some of those projects were logged in 88 of North Carolina's 100 counties. Now, number of hours, you can count that up, almost 200,000, from just the students in this program. But I like to say, "Well, what was it worth? Well, if we paid them minimum wage to do what they did, it was a value of $1,433,000." In May, we'll honor just over 300 graduates of this program who fulfilled all the criteria in a ceremony at Memorial Hall, and I'm going to send all of you an invitation because it's an amazing event, and I hope maybe some of you can join us. At the campus level, our Office of Institutional Research and Assessment, every other year does the Student Experience in the Research University, or SERU, survey. It has a module about community service. And in 2017, the results showed that 53.4% of the student body participated in off-campus service, and 92.8% say that connecting their academics to service is somewhat very important. Why do they get involved? Their top three reasons: become better citizens and community participants, they believe in a particular cause, or a unique and interesting opportunity arose. But you know, enough of facts and figures, so I'm going to let you hear from these two students, because at Carolina, public service has engaged students. I'm going to introduce them both, and they'll come up and share their experiences, and they both participate in our Apples and Buckley Public Service Scholars program. Hewett Ekubin is a senior from Concord. She's a Health Policy and Management major, and she just finished her term as Vice President of Apples. Justin Williford is a junior from Henderson, North Carolina, in Vance County. He's a Math, Statistics, and Analytics major, and he's the outgoing treasurer and newly-installed president of Apples. So I'm going to let you start.
My name is Hewett, and I'm so excited to join you all today and talk about one of my favorite programs, alternative breaks. So just to give you some context, what I consider an alternative break is a student-led trip that joins together about 10 students to do community service based on a particular topic or focus area. So for example, we offer these during the fall, winter, and spring on a variety of topics, including violence prevention, disaster relief, rural communities, and so on and so forth. So during my first year, I got started with Apples through an alternative spring break, focused on Latinx communities. And for those who might not know, Latinx is a word used to describe members of Latino community, it's a more inclusive term. So before we went on that trip, we were all required to take a mandatory two-hour credit course on effective community service. This covered a lot of different topics that really challenged us to really think about how we were going to perform service on this trip and beyond. I think one of my biggest takeaways was learning about the socio-ecological model and how that I can do service, not just on the individual level, by doing direct service with community members, but also on the societal level and influencing policy and eliminating the structural barriers that cause need for a community service in the first place, right? So after my time on the alternative spring break, it was nothing less than life-changing. It definitely opened my eyes to issues facing the Latinx community and also newly-immigrants in North Carolina. And as a child of immigrants myself and a person of color, it really resonated with me. So in my sophomore year, I decided to lead that same trip to teach other students about these issues and raise awareness. And then in my junior year, I couldn't stop learning about these issues, so I continued to serve on Apples Cabinet to strengthen our alternative spring break programs. We offer five different trips during the spring. Excuse me. And fortunately, I had the opportunity to serve as Vice President this past year and give back to an organization that has given so much to me. So not only has it helped me explore community service at Carolina, it's helped me develop my leadership skills and also informed my career beyond Carolina. So I'm a senior, and next year, I hope to learn more about how to do public service in a more effective way and combine my interest in medicine and public health so that one day I can be a primary care physician that advocates for the needs of marginalized communities in North Carolina, especially low-income folks and people who do not have access to health services. So that all started with an alternative spring break, and I'm so, so appreciative of this opportunity. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
We'll do questions, Anna.
Similarly to Hewett, my name is Justin Williford. I, as Lynn said, will be serving as the president for this coming term for Apples Service Learning here at Carolina. My experience with this was pretty similar. In my first year here, I participated in one of our Apples internship programs during the spring semester. Just to give you kind of a framework for that, it is a three-credit-hour course that comes along with the internship, and we connect you with a community partner where you do 150 hours of service with them throughout the semester. And in addition to that, it does fulfill your experiential education requirement, that's a genet here, so it gives you a good opportunity to get that out of the way, but also really connect yourself to your community. I worked directly with Theater Delta, which is a community partner that was originally based in Chapel Hill, now in Durham, that uses interactive theater as a model to promote social change. So with my internship, I originally got into it because I really wanted to get that service experience without compromising the academic rigor that comes with a course here at Carolina. You'll find that in that course, we were reading real academic texts, research that was published on race, environmental health inequities, and things that our service was directly impacting. We also got to experience not only our own internships through the direct work that we were doing, but we, in a way, kind of got bits and pieces of everyone's internship because in that class component, there was a lot of discussion. So while I may have been working with Theater Delta, I got to see what Table was doing, and I got to see what Miracle Feet was doing, and how that could connect back to us and what everyone else was learning, and kind of take everyone's learning objectives, bring it back to myself. Aside from that, as Hewett said, in a lot of ways, it did inform some of my career decisions. I learned that as a STEM major, you can still find yourself in service aspects and in any ways really led me on a path. I now consider myself to be a prospective MPA student, hopefully attending Carolina in the next couple of years for that. And perhaps that's what we need more of, it's people who think quantitatively. You don't have to be a public policy major to have effective impact and tangible impact in the social sphere. Aside from that, I will serve as an Apples organizer, as I have since I completed my internship that first semester. And for me, I identify as a covenant scholar and a first-generation college student here at UNC. So in many ways, that was an accessible outlet for me to get an experience that I may not have had before, and I think it's important that we structure our programs such that they are still supporting those populations, because I know for me how impactful the internship alone was and the course component. So all I can do is work in my term as Apples president to serve and make sure that others are hearing about the programs that they find, that the application processes are equitable, and that they really do have a tangible path and a pathway that they can use to become engaged in service, Apples specifically, but also after they graduate and as an alumnus of Carolina. As Hewett said, I think we'll be available for any questions, so thank you.
So just one of, but probably the main reason I love my job. You can see, working with students like Hewett and Justin every day. So they both mentioned their career paths, and I want to talk just a minute about what happens after graduation, and what effect does all this have. This picture's from last year's Buckley Public Service Scholars graduation event that I mentioned, and we hope you'll be able to join us on graduation weekend. Last year, we did an alumni survey of all the graduates of this program, and we heard back from 31% of the nearly 2,000 alumni. 75% had participated in some sort of community service in the prior 12 months, and 66 were involved on a regular basis. When we asked them about the benefits of the program, they mentioned the top three were building their resumes, learning new skills, and thinking about their professional, social, and ethical responsibilities. But for us, perhaps the most meaningful thing were some of their quotes about what the experience had meant to them, including it being the most profound and important aspect of college experience because it created a thread through academic coursework and personal passions that led to a position, owing who they are today to some of this experience, and being thankful to those here at the university who ensured that they would graduate as an informed citizen dedicated to using their skills to improve the lives of others. So at Carolina, public service is a commitment to a deeper engagement that involves mutually beneficial partnerships between this university and communities throughout the state and around the nation and the world. But mostly, we can just say it is of the public and for the public. So I think we have a couple of minutes, and so if folks have questions, and I've asked the students, because I have a feeling that's where the questions will be.
Questions or comments?
First of all, this, I don't know if we're doing it, but it is so frequently the framework of benefits of North Carolina in a lot of ways, and we went through and then we worry about being accidentary, because that didn't matter in the breadth of our people of Carolina. It just comes one off the page, about just an hour. The other part of that is citizens leaders, and sometimes being a citizen leader means you can start to start anywhere. And I think this program gets people on the path. I'll ask you to view it, doesn't it mean that?
How it changed your mindset, because my hope is that this is shown by the alumni, that it changes people's mindset on what it means to be a citizen leader and be involved in public service, and that it can be broader than that. So I love y'all's comments on that, but did that, how were you shaped by that type of notion for good?
So I guess to put it in short, I love working in Excel. Like, that's what I love doing. I would love to do that for the rest of my life. And what I learned is that you can do that and still work in like a public sphere, and that's mostly what I did with data analytics with Theater Delta. I wasn't up there, you know, or any program or marketing. I was working with the surveys that they were receiving and kind of analyzing that and doing data analytics to see how we could better the programs that we were doing. So I learned that you can still be engaged with a community partner, something that might be considered community service or in the public sphere, but you are working quantitatively and really looking at things and analyzing them as opposed to just, you know, strategic frameworks. So for me, I learned that you can potentially be an effective public administrator with this type-A mindset, and really looking at things as facts and figures, and perhaps, as I mentioned earlier, it might be a benefit if, you know, it's something new to that organization, you may find that it's a new framework that they haven't really looked at before, and maybe that can help bring some new life into an organization. So for me, it showed me that I don't have to go work at Wells Fargo to continue doing that for the rest of my life. I can, you know, work with a community partner with something that perhaps has an impact that hits close to home to me, but still do what I love doing.
And just to add on to that, I think one thing that shifted my perspective about community service from high school to now is kind of the idea of being an active citizen. That can happen in the public sector, you know, through community service.
or working in government. But being active versus being passive and just doing community service in a one-off kind of way, having a mission and the goal to eliminate the need for community service, I think is the biggest shifting that this, the Apples and the Center of Public, Center of Carolina of Public Service had for me. And that's really tied to academics and just understanding why we have these inequities in the first place, just being mission-driven. That can happen in any career, so yeah.
Hey Chancellor.
This is great. Thank you so much. You know, it's so interesting, when I first came here, I kept always hearing about apples, and I didn't know what it was, but it is absolutely true. When you go out and you meet alums, anyone that's been part of that Apples program going back 30 years, they talk so much about how that was transformative. So it's wonderful to hear you speak, but you taught me something today that I didn't know about, a two-hour class in effective community service. And that sounds wonderful. Can you give us a little bit more detail because we've probably all had the experience when we've shown up to do something and we felt like we actually didn't make a contribution in the way we would have really wanted to. So that was really intriguing, and maybe you can both comment on that, but I think, Hewitt, you mentioned that, that was really interesting.
Yeah, sure. This is actually one of my favorite classes at Carolina. So the professor really starts the class with encouraging students to understand themselves. You can't serve others if you don't have a strong understanding of the person that you are and the factors that shaped who you are today. So we did a lot of reflection activities to kind of understand the power dynamics in the United States, how privilege impacts, how certain groups are, are where they are in the current state today and the factors that led to that. Then we get into kind of public health core concepts. So I mentioned the socio-ecological model, but also a lot about community asset mapping and looking at a community based on assets versus deficiencies. We also did a lot of reflection about how service learning programs can do harm if students are not educating themselves on the community and doing their due diligence on researching and not seeing community members as part of an other group, but part of our community. So these were all things that were drilled into us before we even stepped off of campus. And throughout the trip, we also take time to reflect each day on the service that we did. So talking about kind of things that we were experiencing are what we felt, if we think the service that we did was effective, so that students are engaged throughout the entire time. We also touch a lot about values that make for effective service, so I guess mutually beneficial partnerships, sustainability, et cetera, et cetera. So it was a really good course.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're now going to take our media break for the Chancellor, and we will reconvene at 9:35 sharply. Thank you.
I'm going to call on Trustee Dwight Stone for the report on the Finance, Infrastructure, and Audit Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. For the trustees, I just got off the phone with Haywood, and he is doing much better today and sends his regards and his regrets. The Finance, Infrastructure, and Audit Committee met yesterday afternoon. We had a number of designer and design selection approvals for, that are recommended to the full board for approval. I'll ask for all of those at one time. Anna Wu presented the designer selections for the UNC Joyner Residence Hall HVAC bathroom and window renovation. This project is, of course, for Joyner Residence Hall, a four-story, approximately 41,500-square-foot building. The renovation includes 14 multi-user bathrooms and two single-user bathrooms. The second designer selection approval is for UNC Leinberger Comprehensive Cancer Center Faculty Recruitment Lab renovation. This project will renovate about 2,600 square feet of existing laboratory space. We did have some discussion about the price. It is higher than normal from a renovation standpoint, but it is because of the fact that it is a renovation and we have some wet lab space there. We also have a third item for approval for the board. It is a design approval presented by Anna Wu for the UNC Healthcare Surgical Tower. UNC Hospitals received site approval to construct the surgical tower on a site identified in the 2001 campus master plan, south of the ambulatory patient care facility in July. The program for the seven-story surgical tower will include 24 operating rooms, a number of waiting rooms, 56 pre-post-operative care areas that are adjacent to the ORs and the 56 ICU beds. I would submit those to the full board, Mr. Vice Chair, for approval. In addition, a couple of other things. In addition, we had Bruce Warrington, Director of UNC Property Office, recommended approval to authorize a disposition of property by easement to the church, the Community Church of Chapel Hill, for the purpose of connecting the church's parsonage to OAS's main sewer line located on the university property in accordance with the design plans approved by UNC and OAS. We asked that for approval also. Then two other items. One, we had a development report from David Ruth, Vice Chancellor for Development. He presented year-to-date totals as of March 19th. We also had a transit update from Brad Ives, Associate Vice Chancellor for Campus Enterprises and UNC Chief Sustainability Officer, with regards to highlights the key issues for the Durham Orange Light Rail Transit and the north-south corridor bus rapid transit, both of which will be invaluable to the university in the coming years. And lastly, I'd like to applaud our colleagues over at the Board of Governors for approving our business school fee that will allow almost double the number of students who can be admitted into this program. We appreciate their efforts. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight. I'm going to call on Trustee Keys for the External Relations Committee report.
Thank you. We had a great meeting yesterday in External Relations Committee. David Ruth works overtime on these committee days, presenting his report to finance and then also coming to external relations. So one of the things he tries to do now is to make those reports different, and one of the ways he did that yesterday was asking Dean Kevin Guskowitz to join him and make a presentation about what's going on in the College of Arts and Sciences. We were thrilled to learn that a year ago, the college had raised $35 million, and that's 35 million. And at this point today, they raised 83 million, which is, puts them at 91% of their $92 million goal for the year. Kevin is spending about half of his time working on development and doing a terrific job, and Dean Guskowitz, I want to commend you on the work that you're doing. Part of the reason that he's being successful is that he's doing a lot of storytelling, and he's, and he's doing this under kind of an umbrella title of reimagining the arts and sciences for the public good and doing a really great job. The college's campaign goal is $750 million, and that's broken down into basically five categories. $139 million for student support, $75.5 million for faculty support, $355.5 million for leveraging innovation for experiential education is the category, $120 million for capital support, and $60 million unrestricted. Kevin then gave more detail under each of those five categories. David talked to us about the communications efforts associated with the campaign and how at this stage, we've transitioned from being a large-specific effort to being a story-specific effort. They've enjoyed 54 million impressions on items specifically mentioning the campaign or about the campaign, and that's not including advertising during the ACC tournament. When I was reading my notes and I saw 54 million, I went and asked David during the break, is that really right? Because remember what the Chancellor did in her report earlier where she made, I wanted to make sure it was right. By the way, Chancellor, I was looking at Julia's face when you said 50 more for me. She's thinking, our job here is done. But at any rate, that is really correct, that it's 54 million impressions on those items, and I think that's really, really impressive. Among the most popular stories that they've had on the website are a video by Coach Roy Williams on behalf of the Carolina Covenant, which has been viewed 55,000 times, and one of the other popular stories was Ramses on the Jimmy Fallon Show. I think somehow, I, my notes don't have what I wrote about the report from Joel Curran. So I'm going to wing it here and just tell you that Joel's report connected very, very well with the report that we got from David about communication. And he talked about the launch of our new, our new website and how interactive the website is. He got compliments from people who are in our committee about the way that that website is working, and that also, in the same regard, really focuses on a lot of storytelling about what's going on around the campus. I wish I had my notes because some of it's pretty impressive stuff. We looked at three of the videos that they put on the, on the website. One of them was about Terrell County, which you, Chancellor, mentioned a little while ago, and another one was about the Davy Poplar. I actually didn't realize that we have Davy, Davy Senior, Davy Junior, and Davy III on our campus, but, but the short video spells it out, and I think the website is great because it is able to give us in, in very short videos, a lot of really interesting information that, that a lot of us probably would never know otherwise, and I think that's what is drawing people to the website. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Bill. Next, I'm going to give the University Affairs Committee report. We met yesterday, had a full session. The first report was from Madeline Percy and Manny Hernandez, who gave the graduate and professional student update. As a result of the new undergraduate and graduate co-branches of leadership, the graduate and professional students are more engaged, and I think that's very important. The first year of shared governance has been a major success due to Madeline and to Elizabeth for working together, which has been mentioned this morning. Manny spoke about plans for the next year for the graduate and professional students. We look forward to working with him. Next, Vice Chancellor Winston Crisp gave the student affairs update for the committee. Winston specifically covered the CAPS program, the Counseling and Psychological Services Program, and he introduced Dr. Alan Var, who runs the counseling and psych services for Carolina. CAPS does provide services such as therapy, psychiatry, referral services, and academic intervention services for all students. It's important to know that we cannot do not engage in long-term therapeutic care, but they do triage and provide stabilization and referrals to patients to other long-term care when necessary. This is a very valuable service to the university. CAPS is open eight to five, Monday through Friday, and has counselors on call 24/7, 365 days a year. The clinic is a walk-in clinic, and all that come there are seen that day. CAPS services do include individual short-term therapy in order to stabilize and evaluate, group therapy as well, medication evaluation and maintenance issues, academic interventions when necessary, and crisis referral. They refer to community providers if needed, and also study the needs of the parameters for short-term psychology needs. CAPS has to refer approximately 30% of the students seen to outside caregivers. This is the area of concern for student wellness, but we cannot provide the full psych services ourselves. $2.65 million in annual funding at present goes in this area of student wellness, and 70% of the budget is spent on personnel. The 2017, 2018 total health fee is $381, and CAPS gets almost $88 of that, which is 23% of the budget. Wellness and related projects get 77%, which is the other $293 of the student fee. CAPS demands have grown almost 100% in the last five-year period with regard to walk-in visits and urgent next-day appointments. 14% of the UNC student body are projected to use CAPS this year. As a result of these needs, we must understand the upcoming and continuing rise in needs. And Vice Chancellor Winston Crisp has covered a mental health task, has convened a mental health task force to study the emerging best practices and to give advice on how to handle CAPS needs at Carolina. The task force will be chaired by Dr. Erica Wise. She is the Professor of Clinical Psychology and the Director of Psychological Services here. I look forward to serving on that task force myself. Next, we had a great presentation from Dr. Jim LaLutis, and he gave us an update on the history task force projects related to McCorkle Place. Jim covered the potential designs for landscape designs to improve the access and stability of the Unsung Founder's Monument. He covered possible gateway markers, designs for the entries and exits from McCorkle Place. These are important to introduce these areas and those interested in the history of McCorkle Place as the birthplace of the first public university. Jim covered interpreted marker concepts that bring forth a contextualization for McCorkle Place and possible ways to handle that, the beacons that can give information to handheld devices. He also discussed the digital content that will be offered to all via these handheld devices and these beacons, and it will cover images and text to tell the true and accurate history of McCorkle Place and the university. You might imagine a digital version of that being the type of information we present in the Carolina Hall entrance lobby. Also, we must remember that to tell the entire history of this university includes a lot of good and bad history, but we do want to be careful and understand that we have great reason to celebrate the positives that come out of this fine university as well. This is, university has been a leader in many social experiments and moves in the past, and we look forward to that continuing here at Carolina. We will have items to cover when we go into closed and back into open after that as motions from the committee, and that concludes my report. Next, I'll call on the report for strategic framework from Julia Grumbles.
Thank you, Chuck. Before I go into the report, I just got to say how excited I am to see that the blueprint for NEXT is actually getting traction, and actually, pretty quickly, too. And if you think about the presentations we saw today with Lynn Blanchard's presentation on apples and service, and she ended with "of the public and for the public." Even the master plan is so directly tied to the strategic plan, which is a beautiful thing to see. And then, and then in a different way, I saw how it's getting traction. You know it's getting traction when it's embedded in budgets and in fundraising, and Kevin doesn't know this, but when Dean Guskowitz was making his presentation in External Affairs, he talked about where the fundraising dollars were going, experiential learning, making sure that our students get a global experience, which is a big part of the blueprint for NEXT, and also innovation. So it's, it's working, Chancellor. It's really working, and pretty quickly, too. Now I'll turn my comments to the, to our meeting yesterday. If implementing the blueprint for NEXT is our work ahead of all of us... If implementing the blueprint for NEXT is our work ahead of all of us, if we implement and execute strategic priorities, and we will, we will be fulfilling our two primary goals, and that is to make innovation fundamental and to be of the public and for the public. And to that end, we got an amazing, remarkable, it was a Star Wars kind of presentation that clearly demonstrates the breadth and width of our research portfolio. Our first presenter was Nick Law, and he is an Assistant Professor in Physics and Astronomy. And literally, he talked about stars that were in galaxies far, far away. I mean, these are light-years away. And I got to tell you, I didn't know that much about our astronomy department. He gave us an incredible presentation. And he talked about these telescopes that he and his students are building. I mean, it's incredible. And one's located in the southern skies, which is chilly, but they've also developed three or four other telescopes that are literally positioned all over the world. And each one of these telescopes looks at the heavens in different ways. And you're thinking, well, man has always been, and woman has been fascinated with the star, with the stars and the heavens. And so I kept thinking, what's, what is this all about? What's the real implication for us? Well, it's pretty amazing. If our star, the sun, which is, all of these don't last forever, we're always looking at if there are dramatic changes in, in, in our environment and with our atmosphere, they are literally looking for stars or planets that might be able to sustain life. So it's a pretty important implication for, for the work that, that Nick is doing and his team. So if we went from this gigantic look outward, our next presenter was Wesley Legant, and he is an Assistant Professor in Pharmacology and Biomedical Engineer. So we went from the gigantic, now we're going to the tiny, to the molecular cell level. And what he and his students and staff are doing, they're developing, again, a piece of technology, but also a machine, if you want to call it that, that's focused on light sheet, it's a light sheet microscope. And they can actually look and track cells, not in two-dimensional, but, but a three-dimensional way, which is, again, breakthrough technology. And this technology will help enable them to map these cells and to see how they may change. The implications for, for cancer and research are profound and, and kind of mind-blowing at the same time. And one of the things that was common to both of these professors, which again supports, supports the strategic plan of the public and for the public, they both said in different ways, Nick talked about how he was developing technology in a program to embed in the Morehead Planetarium that will reach 750,000 North Carolina school kids, again, of the public and for the public. And then Wesley talked about how he is now working with the School of Education, because he thinks he can, and he can, shape his presentations in a way that school teachers can then inspire the next generation of scientists and researchers. And then I'll end with this. So we were doing the Q and A, and Lowry turned to Wesley and said, why did you come to Carolina? And without hesitation, he said, because I thought I'd be happy here. But then he goes on, and I did ask, it was recorded, and I want everybody to get a copy of this. I don't have the exact words. He said, I thought I'd be happy here, but I chose the University of North Carolina because it was collaborative. It was a university where I could work with some of the most amazing scientists and researchers. He said it was a university that I could work in a culture and an environment where we could bring the best and greatest minds to actually solve some great problems. I am paraphrasing. What he said was much more powerful, and I want you to have that quote, because it is really, really quite simple. So that concludes, actually doesn't conclude my report, since I've got the microphone. I also want to tell you that the day before, Tuesday before we had our committee meetings yesterday, Bob Bluen convened our committee in his office for two hours, and we had a real working session. And if you've never been in a working session with Bob Bluen, it's, it's something to behold. He gets his big whiteboard up there, and he stood and he wrote, and he was so good at really teeing up a great conversation, really helping all of us to define what, what opportunities slash problems the university needs to look at and to solve in order to have a great infrastructure and great systems and processes in place so that we could execute the blueprint for NEXT. We've got to do, look behind the curtain. And so it was honest. It was, it was exciting. There were a lot of ideas that were, that he engaged us in. And I think it was, I don't, I'm speaking for the committee, but it was time well spent. And I think we all have a deeper understanding and appreciation, not only for the great provost that you've hired and his amazing team. I'm looking out, I see Judith and, and Jean Olalla, and anyway, Jonathan, oh absolutely, I just can't see, there you go, Jonathan, hiding. He's got a great team. Yeah, great team. And so I just tell you, I sleep better at night after that meeting on, on Tuesday with Bob and his team and committee. So thank you for indulging me and giving me the microphone for longer than I usually take.
Thank you. You, you're an amazing cheerleader for this university, and that is important. With the reports being complete, I'm going to seek a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A, to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under Section 122-22 and the following, and also pursuant to Section 143-318.11A, A2, A3, A5, A6.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are going into closed session. Thank you.